Yes.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Okay. What is, what are we looking at? Oh, we've got better mics for them.
Oh.
Look at that. We're moving on up.
Lot of information. Same study session for Dr. Schampf.
Yeah.
All right, if everyone would find their seats and get prepared, I'll go ahead and get the meeting started. Please turn off your cell phones or turn them to silent mode so as not to disrupt the meeting. All right, I'm calling the council meeting to order at six thirty one. Citizens who have requested to address the council will be called on at the appropriate time to make your comments. And we do have a total of six comments this evening, so we will stick to the five minutes. Just for your information, we do have a thirty minute total time limit on our public comment as part of our policy. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Schwartz. All council members are present except Councilmember Scog.
Thank you, Debbie. We would take a motion to excuse Mr. Scog for this meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll start again.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Scog. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. And Councilmember Francher, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Does any council member wish to move any consent agenda items to business item for individual discussion and vote? If not, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
I remember that we approved the agenda.
Second.
We have an emotion, a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. First up this evening, we have several presentations, starting with Childhood Cancer Month Proclamation. And I apologize, I believe Ms. Angela Desmo is supposed to be here this evening to present. Is there someone in her stead here? Okay, yes, please step forward to the, to the podium over here if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Okay, and unless you had some words, I'm just going to go ahead and read the proclamation for you.
Yeah.
Okay, now this is for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas pediatric cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas one in two hundred and eighty-five children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday, and whereas eighty percent of childhood cancer causes are diagnosed only after the disease has metastasized and spread to other parts of the body, and whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have long-lasting chronic conditions as a result of the treatment they go through, and whereas there has been a twenty-four percent increase in pediatric cancer cases over the last forty years, equal to forty-three children per day or fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty children a year diagnosed with cancer in the United States. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognized the unique research needs of childhood cancer and increased funding to conduct this research, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently to dedicate their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, and whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure for all childhood cancers. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council members of Moses Lake, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-five as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Moses Lake. I encourage all people in our city to join me in this special observance. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Okay, on Friday, I actually attended a ceremony and read this next proclamation, but I am going to do it here again tonight on the record. And this is for the establishment of Dawn and Mary Cunningham Day here in Moses Lake. Whereas Dawn and Mary Cunningham moved to the city in nineteen fifty-eight, whereas Mary worked for the City of Moses Lake Parks and Recreation Department for twenty-five years, and whereas she was the acting manager of the Swedberg Pool in nineteen ninety-five when funding was secured to build the local aquatic center, now known as the Surf and Slide Water Park. Her many endeavors also included being a proud coach of the Manta Ray Youth Swim Team. And whereas Dawn and Mary were volunteer organizers of the Spring Fling Community Event in the early, in the seventies and eighties, which came to be known as Spring Fest in nineteen ninety-six, they were also lead organizers of community day events during that same time period. And whereas their deep love of children was also evident by their leadership in other community events such as the Hershey Track Meet, Special Olympics, and the Generations of Children Mary taught to swim. And whereas in nineteen eighty, following the eruption of Mount St. Helens, they were instrumental in the rescue of many stranded tourists affected, and through their involvement with the American Red Cross, opened a Catholic charity house with full services for five hundred and twenty-five people. And whereas in the city of Moses Lake, we value our citizens' time, talent, and treasure, and whereas we recognize the significance of citizen contributions throughout the history of Moses Lake, now therefore, on September fifth, twenty twenty-five, we recognize this day as Dawn and Mary Cunningham Day in the city of Moses Lake. On this day, the citizens shall honor and be inspired by the many contributions of the Cunningham family to the enrich, enrichment of our community and the positive development of our children. And the ceremony was very well attended on Friday with both family members and plenty of friends and community members from Moses Lake to honor the Cunningham. So thank you to any of those who were there to share in that with us. Next up, we have a presentation from Sarah Thompson Tweedy, who is the president of the Grant County Animal Outreach, amongst other things.
Thank you. I was asked to give the council a quick update on
Thank you. I was asked to give the council a quick update on the new animal shelter that Grant County Animal Outreach is working to build. And before I get started, I would just like to ask the Grant County Animal Outreach Board members, there's a couple here tonight, and the employees, if they would give a wave and... I wanna say... I wanted you to see who they are. Many times, I'm the face of Grant County Animal Outreach, but there are so many other folks behind the scenes who are working hard, and they have a big heart for animals, and they deserve to be recognized too. And on behalf of the employees and the Board of Grant County Animal Outreach, I also want to thank you for the tremendous support that you have given us over the last few years. And in this year in particular, it has made such a significant difference for us, and things are so much better at Grant County Animal Outreach because the city council listened to us and supported our work. So, I wanna thank you publicly for making that commitment to us. We deeply appreciate it. So, the site of the new shelter will be seventy-four zero one Randolph Road Northeast. So, if you are holding a baseball in your hand and you are standing at the current Grant County Animal Outreach and you have a really good arm, you might be able to hit that piece property. It, it's just a little ways up the road. So, if you pass the current shelter on your right and you pass the road that goes down to the, to the dump, it's the next property right there where Okanagan Fruit is, the horseshoe-shaped property. And that was land that was donated to Grant County Animal Outreach. We were able to secure an additional, some additional funding, just shy of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our legislators, Representatives Ibarra and Dent, as well as Senator Warnock, so we're very grateful that they advocated for us. We submitted our permit application to the city on July twenty-fifth. And on, we have received a... And I'm using language that I'm not quite familiar with. I don't build buildings for a living, so just parroting. But we received a favorable land use interpretation, allowing us to build at the location which is technically a heavy industrial use zone. Looking at the attorney in the room. And we also received our notice from the city that water and sewer is available, so that's also very, very good news. So, once the permits are in place, that's when we can get a shovel in the ground. And once we have that information, we'll be about two weeks out from being able to put a shovel in the ground. And you can expect to receive an invitation for the groundbreaking ceremony in honor of that, and it will be an honor to recognize the city council's support for this project, as well as the Board of Commissioners. So, I hope when you get that invitation, you will be there. And once we're under construction, the estimate is that it will take about eight to ten months to build, and the total cost of the build will be two point five million. And the new shelter is designed to accommodate up to a hundred and twenty dogs at maximum capacity. And sixty dogs, if we're able to keep the indoor-outdoor space available to each dog. There will also be ten spaces which can hold cats and a cattery, if you will, so cats can live together. And they'll have ten spaces for that. And we'll also have an additional ten to twenty kennels for animals who need isolation. So, when animals come into the shelter, you know, first things first, we have to isolate them from the, from the population so that we can get them vaccinated and neutered and all of those things taken care of. The perimeter will be fenced, and the civil scope calls for fenced exercise pens and a meet-and-greet area as well, which is something that we don't really currently have. So, a lot of our meet-and-greet is in a very small lobby space, as well as like in the parking lot, so... And one of the kennels outside, so we're really excited. I'm particularly excited about that, so that families can properly meet the dog that is of interest to them. And the total square footage of the building will be sixty-two hundred square feet. And the conditioned area of the building will include reception areas, offices, bathrooms, an intake room, a conference room that also doubles as the meet-and-greet space, a morgue, that's necessary part of our work, an outfitted laundry room, and food prep areas and kitchen, kind of a kitchen area where we prepare the dogs' meals and wash their dishes, and cats as well. Right. I'm often told that I forget about the cats, and I'm sorry about that. I'm a dog person. Love cats, wish them well, but I'm about the dogs. So, that's what I have for you. I am super excited. We are right there. That doesn't mean we don't have some obstacles that we need to overcome, but we are right there. We are right there. And so, very excited, happy to take any questions or... Thank you so much. Oh!
Hold on. Councilmember Martinez.
I like dogs too, but I currently have a cat, so when you said cattery and they're all gonna be together...
Not all of them.
Okay.
There's gonna be separate spaces, but multiple cats can live in it. So, like dogs, they get their own kennel space, but cats, you can put several of them in one space together, so there will be...
My question is, you know, how are you gonna keep from having multiple litters?
We spay and neuter them before we, they ever hit the general population.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's standard practice.
Thank you.
We keep them separate.
Okay.
So, I had a couple of questions. One is, this facility does serve the entire county, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you know, about what percentage of the total usage roughly is Moses Lake animals?
We take in far more animals from Moses Lake than we do from the county. An exact percentage, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's a number I could get for you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And do you think that's just due to enforcement, or that there are a larger number of stray animals in the city than there are rurally?
I, you know, I, I think that animal control for the county and in the city might be a better source for that kinda information. I don't... So, GCAO, we don't typically respond to calls to go get an animal. They're typically brought to us by animal control.
Okay. All right, Mr. Lombardi.
Yeah. This is just a point of information, so to speak, Mayor. So, there is the Quincy Animal Shelter as well. And one of the things that I had proposed to the Commissioners was that certain cities that are closer to other counties, most of their people are already going there. So, to set up some type of inter-local agreements with different cities in different counties, and that way, the flow is a lot better, because it's really hard for somebody to drive an hour and a half, let's say, for two cats.
Yeah. And Quincy only takes animals in the Quincy proper, so they, they have a very confined jurisdiction, if you will. But they are great partners. I don't wanna give an impression that they're not. They're great partners.
Great. Okay, I think we don't have any other questions, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Last but not least, this evening for presentations, we have several awards and new hire introductions. And here to present those this evening is our police chief, Dave Sands.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council. I should have two. I have two presentations tonight to recognize your Moses Lake Police Officers. First up, I would like to introduce, I say the newest, but they're not technically the newest. The newest to pass FTO, or Field Training, and/or are in the middle of field training. Officer Whitney Nelson. When I asked Officer Nelson for a short bio, she very much focused on short. And so, I helped her out a little bit. Officer Nelson grew up on the west side of the state, although she's an eastern Washington person at heart. She worked armed security before becoming a Renton Police Officer. And during her FTO, or Field Training with Renton, she recognized it was not the type of policing she wanted. She did not get to help people. It was not the close-knit, small-town atmosphere that she had grown up in. It did not give her the opportunity to work as a team, like the Moses Lake Police Department does. Officer Nelson is all smiles at work, but don't take that for granted and don't try to run from her. I have video evidence, she's a little bit of a pit bull when she chases you down. Officer Nelson enjoys chasing her children from activity to activity, which may be part of the reason she is so adept at chasing people around. And along with her wife Erica reside within the city of Moses Lake. Officer Stefan Zucktregele. As you may have guessed, Officer Zucktregele is of German descent. And not ironically, grew up in Leavenworth. While he did not advise if he ran around wearing lederhosen, he did spend time working in family restaurants in the area and enjoying the outdoor activities such as hiking, camping, skiing, fishing, and so on. Officer Zucktregele, whose name demands some sort of a nickname at a later date, worked in the service industry, including Mission Ridge, before joining the National Guard and heading off to basic training. He came to Moses Lake through his fiancee, Ellie, who grew up here. Officer Zucktregele graduated from the academy in June and is in the middle of his field training. I can attest that these officers are great additions to your Moses Lake Police Department, are great team members, and have an amazing attitude. Mr. Mayor and Council, two of your newest Moses Lake Police Officers. She's running. Wait, you'll get a chance to see her run. Nevermind, okay. Mayor and Council, we have another presentation, and this time it is an award. In the world of police command officers, there are three schools that are considered prestigious programs to attend. They're once-in-a-lifetime events. The FBI National Academy, the Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command College, and the Southern Police Institute. While smaller than the more prestigious FBI National Academy, which it is smaller, it's not more prestigious, I guess, but it is, I have to admit, more academically challenging. Only about forty students get accepted into the Southern Police Institute, and only after completing a lengthy written exam. Out of the forty students, three-quarters of which are graduate level. From February to May of this year, Captain Mike Williams, at, with the urging of his lovely wife Tammy, and I don't know if it was urging because she's a supportive spouse or if she wanted three months away from him, was accepted into the Southern Police Institute at the University of Louisville. As mentioned, this is an intensive graduate-level academic program requiring students to research and report on a variety of police and leadership-related topics. Captain Williams happily completed twelve-to-fifteen-page papers on various study topics such as complete change in overhaul of training programs, evidence-based benefits of on-duty workouts, rule of law, and trauma-informed policing. But if you know Captain Williams, you know he is not happy with just getting through a program. He did complete it, but I also keep getting awards for him. In the summer, I got a letter and award from the school. One award, which was the Award of Excellence, is that of the Dean Scholar. Excuse me. That, this is a letter, this is what it read in part. "One such Award of Excellence is the Dean Scholar, a recognition awarded to students who earned the letter grade of A in each of their courses. Only a small percentage of students achieve this status. Additionally, we are pleased to inform you that Captain Michael Williams has earned recognition for achieving the highest grade point average in the graduate program. Mayor and Council, this was an impressive feat, and I wanted to recognize publicly Captain Williams for this, to showcase, along with our newest officers, also our maybe older officers, and the level of commitment, work product they give to the city. Ladies and gentlemen, Captain Mike Williams." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the new officers, and congratulations. All right, next up, we have Citizen Communications. The council values free expression of all points of view as an important democratic process. Each person's allowed a maximum of five minutes. When you are called to speak, please begin by stating your name and city of residence for the record. I'm gonna go ahead and let these people file out real quickly. All right, first up, we have Mr. Dan Levitt.
There we go. Dan Levitt, twelve twenty-four South Pioneer Way, Moses Lake, Washington. I just wanted to make a comment about the Planning Commission docket. I would like to request that language be added to the, the Development Code to allow for small, for small-scale neighborhood commercial uses. Currently in the comprehensive plan, there is language to support that, but there's nothing in the Development Code to direct that, that type of development.
Can you state that one more time?
So, in the, in the, the comprehensive plan, it's in the Land Use Section Policy three point three point three, it states that there's, that there, there is, is written support for small-scale neighborhood commercial uses. In the, the Development Code, there's nothing, there's, there's no, there are no guidelines for the development of those small-scale neighborhood commercial uses.
Okay, and so what's the suggestion and request specific on that?
Yeah, just for, for council to direct staff to create some language to support that, that policy in the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And I've also got item three. I don't know if you want me to talk about that now or wait until item three, the homestly rezon.
This is the public comment period. You can request that your comments wait till that.
So, so I would, yes, if possible, I'd like to wait until item three, if that's possible.
Okay.
If I can.
If there are no objections, we'll go ahead and...
Okay.
Go that route. So, you'll make yourself available as needed?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Levitt, can you step back up? We do have one question from Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Can you give me an example of what you're talking about?
So, it would, it would be like a, like a Frank's Market. And, and, and also that, that type of use does support some of the goals the council set at their retreat, but I won't go into those.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and next up, we have Brent Thomas. Just as a reminder, please state your name and city of residence.
Brent Thomas, Moses Lake. Thank you, sir. I should be brief. I don't like public speaking. So, and I may be at the wrong ti, wrong date, but everything that I saw or read or heard about was that the library was gonna be discussed at this meeting tonight. So, that's, that's what my comment is in regards to. Just gonna read my notes. Just a little bit of my background. I have used the library. I've taken all my kids to the library for various reasons. They love checking out new books. Another part of my story is, two separate times in my life, I have been homeless for a period of time. And I use the library to charge my phone, fill out applications for jobs, and create a resume. I've also used the computers there for those very same things when I wasn't homeless. So, the library is very important to me. The library, the library is more than just some books to check out, although that is one of their services. I'm just up here and encourage you to please consider keeping the library open. I understand there are a lot of moving parts, and there's more to it than just a simple yes or no. But it's my belief that we need to make sure that the library stays here in Moses Lake for our families, for our children, for our grandchildren, for generations to come. I've missed some council meetings, so I'm a little bit out of touch lately, but I have heard some things in the past, and I would just like to reiterate or point out that the park next to the library is a city park. It has, the library has no control or no affiliation with that park. I know that there is some public perception... I know that there is some public perception of what happens across the street. So anyways, I believe in saving the library. My hope is that you on the council will not even entertain a conversation about closing it. And that's all I got. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Matt Pollak.
Hello, Matt Pollak, Moses Lake. I'm also here about the library. I, I had heard some comments last meeting about some confusion about why so many people are coming to the library and what the, what, what caused this. So I wanted to kind of give you guys a, like a perspective, like where it is from people who love the library, who want to go there, why we feel like it's in danger. Starting about a year ago, there was, there were some remarks by a council member that were very disparaging about the library and talked about things from, you know, Den of Inequity, I think is what it was called, or Iniquity. I don't, I don't remember the exact word. And, and some of the things that were said in there were never corrected either by the member or by the rest of council. So it kind of started that feeling from us that our library is under attack. And, and for somebody who, when, when we moved here in, I think it was two thousand seventeen, two thousand seven. Sorry, my wife took my son to a storytime at the library and we still have friends in town from that very first time. That was seventeen years ago. So hearing something like that, it just sends a shock into your system, like what is happening? Like this place that I love might be in danger. So fast forward past a few things and, and to the council retreat, then we, we heard some very clear things. We heard that there was going to be a building assessment and before anything happened with the library. That assessment would be discussed publicly and then council would have the chance to do that. And then I think it was a month ago, we hear about a letter being sent requesting a raise in rent. Which appears to people that, you know, something happened between the retreat and now that made something different happen than what we were expecting. So I think that left a taste in people's mouth, like what is happening here? Why is everything coming against the library and we're not hearing why? That may not be anybody's fault. Like that may just be the way that the world happens. But I wanted to give you kind of a glimpse into how we're seeing things so that maybe we can come together and you know, have a more healthy discussion about this because it's, right now, it doesn't feel healthy to me. It feels like you know, council's feeling like they're getting beat up unfairly and we feel like the library is getting attacked unfairly. Well, maybe neither of those things are true and I think we should be able to talk about it with each other. So I wanted to give you my perspective so that at least you know why we feel the way that we do. And that's all I had to say really. But oh, I, I did want to give you an opportunity that would pro- I, I hope it had put my mind at ease and then hopefully others as well. Is if, if council would say, like just each one of you would say, I support having the library in our community. I want to keep it here and we will make the fees to the library as low as we possibly can. That's not setting a, you know, a requirement for a dollar amount. That's just saying, we'll try to make it as low as we can. That would put a lot of our minds at ease, I think. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Sylvia Hammond.
Hi, to each of you, I'm Sylvia Hammond. I live in rural Ephrata, as my address is an Ephrata address. But because I'm located on a farm between Ephrata and Moses Lake, Moses Lake is also a big part of where I do everything. And I go to the library in Ephrata, I go to the library in Moses Lake when my grandchildren are in town. The system, you know, the library system, as you know, is not just the Moses Lake Library. It's the North Central Washington system. And so that library card lets me take my grandchildren, although they'd be welcome even without the card, to activities in Moses Lake and Ephrata and Wenatchee. And I've done that and wonderful activities available to them through those libraries. I know that over the last few months, you've heard people come up and like this, both of this, you know, this man about his experience with the library for adults and children and everything. The library is a shining star in the community. And it would be embarrassing to a community the size of Moses Lake not to have a thriving library. That, that's inconceivable. The, all of the benefits that it brings to a community. Libraries actually even bring financial benefits to communities because it frees up money for people that people that might feel that they have to spend money for children's programs or internet or different things that they don't have. And so they can access those things at the library. And then those monies end up being available to be used in the community. So you can look that up as online easily. Look, what are the financial advantages of having a library in your community? And they, they are there. So going back, just why I want to speak for the library is that like Mr. Pollak said, there, there's been this rumble and it feels like it's, you know, I guess the word would be like there's a negative vibe that, that feels like it's rumbling around and people kind of afraid of why does the council want to get rid of the library? I don't think that's necessarily true. But I think that if you saw in some social media posts lately, the Quincy Library, they went and presented some things at the council meeting. And because it's the month for getting your library card, they're members of the council, they didn't have library cards. They all got library cards that day. We all have our, I hope every one of you has a library card. There was a police officer that was part of the meeting the other day and picture of him, I got my library card. You know what that would mean to the people of Moses Lake and to the, by extension, the library system? If we had a photograph of each of you saying whether it's a new card or an old card, I have my library card. Do what that would mean to show that there was support, that you don't want to shutter this library down and say, well, you don't really need a physical library. You can just do something virtual. That is not appropriate for the city of Moses Lake, not by a long shot. You're here to support success for the city of Moses Lake. And I think you need to prioritize the library. I know there's been issues. There was the Narcan issue. One way or another, that was resolved. There is now an issue with security and I want to point out that the library system, North Central Washington, they invested not because, because they listened that people in Moses Lake were concerned. They invested eleven thousand five hundred dollars for a new security officer who's at the library during the busiest hours. They worked with your police department here to get officers to show them where the most beneficial places were to put cameras outside. You can get this letter online that the library posted that, and that showed that they did this. And they put, even though it isn't their responsibility to put up security outside the building, North Central Washington system has now installed security outside that building to help everybody feel as comfortable as possible in the library. And now I know there are budget issues involving the library. What are we going to do? There are repairs that have to be done. Maybe we can't afford it. I want you, what I would like to hear from the council is to say, we prioritize the library. We will move heaven and earth. There are ways to get funds. Go and aggressively go after grants, aggressively go after some of the people in this community that are very philanthropic, who can contribute money. You know, Moses Lake made sports happen when there was no funding for sports. That was, that was amazing. That was individuals stepping forward and coordinating together to bring something to the community. That same kind of thing can happen.
Your time is up, actually.
But that, but if I can just finish a sentence.
Yes.
You can do that. You can do that. Just prioritize the library and let people know you're doing that. Thank you very much for my extra thirty seconds. I appreciate it.
Appreciate that. Thanks. Okay, Ms. Judy Hooper.
Judy Hooper, Moses Lake, and I'm also here to address the library. There's been enough rumblings about the possibility of it being closed that we're all concerned about it and we don't want to see that happen. Actually, my daughter was going to come tonight to, to talk about this and she couldn't make it. So I said, well, I'll go and talk for you. I'm not a public speaker. She does not want to see this library closed. She brings her daughter, who is almost ten, to the library because she's an avid reader and she loves to go to the library and get books. My daughter is also an avid reader. She appreciates the fact that she can go to the library and get a book for free. And, you know, if you buy a book, everybody knows how expensive they are. And it's just we need the library and with the schools in the situation they are in with the levy and all that. They don't have libraries at the school right now. So where are the kids supposed to get their books? My daughter's experience at the library has been really good. She appreciates the fact that it is always clean. The restrooms are always clean. The staff there is friendly and very helpful. It's a quiet environment. My grandson is a special needs student who is getting educated through the digital learning center. And he can go there and use the free wifi and have a quiet space to study because sometimes they just want to get out of the house. And it's an option for them to go someplace else for him to study. And they really have appreciated that. So bottom line. Do what you can to make sure our library stays open. We need it. Our kids need it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Jill Springer Forrest.
All right, I'm Jill Springer Forrest from Moses Lake. And I want to point out a couple of things about the library. When people are deciding where to live, a library is a must, especially for young children. The storytimes they provide is invaluable. And preschools also use the library for storytime and where children get their first introduction to books. Personally. Excuse me, I don't know what I'm thinking. I can't read without these. Personally, the library has always been my safe space. Growing up, it was so good to be able to get books and for free, since buying them was money we could not afford. It's imperative that we keep the funding and library to fund the renovations and repairs that are needed. The library is a safe and welcoming place for kids to go to, to learn regardless of their family's bank accounts. I strongly support funding for the library. The, the city will lose status if we lose it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the public comment for this evening. We will bring Mr. Levitt back up for item number three, I believe. Okay, at this time, we're going to have a joint study session with the Planning Commission, which is a little change of pace for our meetings, but a welcome one this evening. I will go ahead and introduce the Planning Commission members real quickly and then turn it over to Vivian to get started. So here with us this evening, we have Mr. Gary Mann, Mr. Nathan Knossinger, and Mr. Howard Holmesley. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. Vivian?
Thank you. As you know, the Planning Commission and the planning staff have worked very hard to develop this docket for you to amend the comp plan items and also the development regulations. We've been monitoring our new code and it needs work. And so they've they've recommended some changes for you to do and our senior planner Nate will be going through the items, correct?
Thank you very much.
Nate, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself real quick, just so everybody knows who you are and we actually do business here. We have those people.
Thank you.
I'm Nathan Pay. I'm the senior planner in the Community Development Department. And before us, as Vivian Ramsey articulated, for mayor and council is basically conversion of the preliminary docket to the final docket. And what the docket is, is a list of potential amendments for basically the comp plan and our code, our unified development code. The Planning Commission, as represented here, has gone through at least two workshops and a public hearing to receive testimony on this particular list. The council has the authority, of course, to change this list as you desire. And an item on the list doesn't really guarantee that it will be completed. What it does is give authority to staff and the Planning Commission to continue working on these amendments and develop the specific language and text to have their separate hearings on those items and bring forward those amendments to the council. But for today, we're just speaking, basically getting a, a check from council saying, yes, we are thinking that this is worthy. This is a list that they'd like to, you'd like to see completed and brought forward. Again, it's fifty items. We added one item. And it is something that can be reduced, expanded. And again, it's something really important for our planning commission and council to basically say, hey, as part of the public process, this is the venue for changing the code when there's a potential for making it a little bit better. Finding errors or omissions or making some, some things feel like more Scrivener error, errors that are produced by the author that may have had a little bit of typo scenario. But staff doesn't necessarily have the authority to change that. Council does. Council has the full authority to develop the regulations and amend them as you see fit. And this is the one of the cycles that's used to bring those forward into your attention. So as you please, and planning commission can support and recognize the effort and work that they've done to get to this point. I can go item by item, or if I can go through and if there's questions for item, we can pause and wait for those questions and we can go through and identify those. If it's the desire of council and how you like to proceed, at this time, we can definitely go line by line.
Council's preference?
I would, I would say that, I mean, I've read through this because I was told to read through it extensively in our last meeting. I deal with this a lot, probably more than all the councilmen. So I, I'm pretty comfortable with what the planning commission's work has done, but I'm one person, so.
For the public, maybe is there some highlights or some particularly interesting proposed amendments?
What I'll do is I'll go through them and I'll do them super fast.
Perfect.
How's that?
Fifty sounds like a lot, but I think if you read them, we can go pretty fast.
Honestly, some of this stuff is, is very short for understanding. Item one, the opportunity for someone to do advanced construction on a subdivision. These are model homes. Right now, we're allowed to do four model homes for residential. Planning Commission desire that we do all structures. So any form of subdivision gets that same opportunity for advanced construction. Item two, allow short term rentals in ADUs. The planning commission may have specific language for not having a hundred percent short term rental for all structures. But they do want to have an opportunity for ADUs, accessory dwelling units, to have short term rentals. Item three, the allowance for ninety-five percent compacted gravel for mini storage in the industrial district. As a part of the industrial district, many storages don't necessarily have the parking needs that other commercial operations may have. So the planning commission's entertaining considering the opportunity for a different form of parking rather than asphalt or, or for a different form of parking rather than asphalt or concrete. In addition, there might be an opportunity to change the definitions of how that is defined. And if, in fact, there's an area for low trip, the Planning Commission is studying some, some language for that, and that's pretty good information. Item five, electrical vehicles charging stations. Right now, the requirement under the International Building Code is to add EV stations, electrical vehicle charging. What the desire is, is out of the required standards, give additional credits, have more flexibility so that the developer may be able to choose rather than it's a mandate for the type of parking that's required for EV stations. Item six is more of a Scrivener component. There's a sequence of numbering for heavy industrial and primary that has some language that's confusing that we need to clean up. Doesn't make much sense as it stands today. Item seven is to change the cargo container classification and remove the word "new." Apparently, "new" is confusing to the public. We do have non-conforming standards, specifications that deal with existing legally established uses. Cargo containers are no different from that. The word "new" adds a sense of vesting that isn't necessarily appropriate. That's true with, not a different topic, but number seven, general criteria for what cargo containers look like, how they're placed. Want to review that and stay there and give some recommendations back to the council. Number nine, we're changing accessory dwelling units to make sure it's clear that accessory dwelling units have to meet appropriate setbacks. There's language in the code that is unclear. So that's just to make sure that there's clear expectation for the developer, clear expectation for basically anyone that wants to apply for it, from a homeowner to anyone else, is make sure very, very clear what those standard specifications are. There is some standards on number 10 for providing new regulations for off-premise signs, billboards, and public directional signs. There's a need to get some more additional information to direct people, at least for public spaces, to get to where they're going. And those include off-site premise sign. Off-site premise signs and billboards basically read the same, and one prohibits, one says sure. So we want to clean that up and say, no, we're going to say what we want, bring that back to council as a recommendation. Number 11, we want to actually have standards and specifications as well as allowing drive-throughs. Right now, the downtown core prohibits drive-throughs. But we do want to actually stipulate and have standards, as the old code used to have, for drive-throughs. What, what's going on with them? We want to make sure that, again, the downtown core, there's an emphasis on pedestrian orientation. But for banks, restaurants, all those things that are very common to have drive-throughs, pharmacies, let's continue having them. They're a good thing. 12, 13, and 14 are changing numbering sequences in standards for, within the table. They don't match. Let's fix it. Fifteen, there's a request and a result for auto repair and auto body shops. Basically, the inclusion of auto, where there should be in which districts, and for basically dealing with paint. Which body shops are just repair, and which ones include paint and auto body? So our code needs to be revised to amend or change those specifications and allow auto repair in different zoning districts because right now it's very restrictive and complicated for folks that have normal operation of those facilities. We do have architectural standards in our code for commercial buildings. Right now, the roofline component is very complicated to understand and to calculate. So we have had at least one or two projects that, for at least massing perspectives, we had to do some creative solutions to get the things rolling and get it out the door. So we're asking that the code be cleared up so it's not so complicated for our architects and designers to make the roofline meet code as, as desired. Binding site plans. Binding site plans are the alternative form of subdivision. They allow for commercial and industrial subdivision property without going through the regular subdivision process, which is depending on what type, it's short and major subdivisions. And we're asking that there's additional information for ensuring that we have the appropriate engineering plans and the clarification of what that means. I want to make sure that's done. Also with binding site plans is an opportunity providing private, commercial, and industrial road standards. Right now, road standards are it. If you've got a road, it has to meet the full standards and specifications, sidewalk, curb, and gutter for full width. We're looking at industrial and commercial and saying, hey, maybe we need a different standard for industrial. Maybe it just needs to be more of a fire apparatus road with a drive surface and a shoulder component rather than sidewalk, curb, and gutter. And on the private side, we don't really have the guidance to provide for developers to understand what that means. So it's kind of up in the air, and we rely on the fire codes rather than having guidance from council and planning commission on what those specifications should actually look like. We want to amend the subdivision standards and specifications. Our finance director doesn't need to be part of that component. The Treasurers and Assessor's Office under the state standards actually are the bodies that review final subdivisions and preliminary. Our city finance director doesn't do that. So we're removing that section. Really easy thing to do, but necessary for us to move forward with making sure that we comply with the regulations. We want to change the permitting processes for binding site plans. Binding site plans has two separate and different permitting standards and specifications. We're looking at one. We don't want to have two, just one. So that's just an efficiency component. We want to make sure it's very clear for the applicant as well as our processing standard specifications. We're changing the building code and moving some sections on when there's a piece of property that does not have infrastructure to support it. So through time, there's been properties that have been subdivided or not subdivided, in fact, that don't have the infrastructure to support it, being sewer, water, and roads. And that has been living in a code section under the building code. We'd like to modify that, move it, and provide additional exception and exemptions for when and where those are applicable. So it's a big lift, but kind of important for us to make sure that, again, infrastructure supports the development that's being served by that infrastructure. Waterright transfers. Those components are still in the codes. They were under the subdivision regulations. They're still existing under the building codes. And we're actually trying to introduce an opportunity for any reduction for accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units are typically smaller and attached to the primary. So there's an opportunity for maybe a possibility of supporting that additional density, maybe applying an exemption and ensuring that it's attached to a building permit rather than a subdivision. Making things clear, supporting additional densities, allowing development to occur in a form and fashion that wouldn't be prohibited by the transfer of development rights. Five acre segs. So under the state statute, there's an exemption clause for basically, anything larger than five acres can go through an exemption process that segregates, separate that property out. Our code doesn't have that. So we want to reflect that and ensure, basically say that, hey, if you want to do this, don't make it landlocked. Like, there's all sorts of statutes that prohibit that as well. But we're going to have it in our code to say, hey, you might be able to split that off, but make sure that there's a connection to the infrastructure, being sewer, water, and access, being roads. So we want to make sure that's very clear and supportive of the state statute that allows that specific exemption. Twenty-four, halfway there. We want to add some additional information and standard specifications for mini storage screening. Mini storage does, has been allowed in alternative districts now, not just the industrial district, or there's other areas that it can be applied. And there's a proper opportunity for screening those facilities, making them look a little bit nicer. I want to make sure that we do that. We want to add, include specifications for driveway entrances. So we have a controlled driveway, rather than driveway, driveway, driveway. Usually, what happens is left-turn movements are the opportunity for collision. And when you have multiple driveways, you have opportunity for multiple left-turn movements at the same time. We want to have an opportunity to control that, limit your access in a way that one ensures you have access, make sure you get as much as you need, but also remove those opportunities for left-turn movement collisions. There's a clarification on standard sidewalks. The language in the code is not clear. So we want to make sure we understand what standard sidewalks are and what alternative is available through pathways.
Does that include grass or just the, what's the intention there?
Pause.
I mean, will it, will you be examining the landscaping component of the sidewalk system also? Okay.
If the council desires, we can add that to subsection 26.
Well, I think it's kind of, I mean, both of those need to go together at some level, right?
Yeah. One amendment we had early on was to allow, Planning Commission, please help me on this one, a meandering component where the separation with the planter strip could come in and touch specifically for cul-de-sacs as well. But make it so that it isn't just a straight beeline. And we're trying to get back to that, where we could have some choices rather than just strictly five-foot of planter strip, and then the cul-de-sacs turned into a mess.
Okay, so that's an opportunity, like for utilities also with that meandering, like a PUD transformer, for instance?
Yes, if there's things that are necessary for pedestals that would stop the, we want to have the flexibility. Because there's placement that has driveways and do all sorts of wonderful things that we want to, that explore that idea. I actually thought it was in it, and maybe one of the earlier versions. I know the Planning Commission had been talking about it through the Unified Development Code, and we can definitely add that, make sure it's very clear. We want the flexibility and opportunity for design deviations.
I think Mr. Fancher also had a comment on that.
Well, my question is, this, this is, these are code updates to the current code.
Correct.
This isn't change of design standards.
We do have design standards in our code.
Well, but, but I, I mean, we've, we've talked in different times about potentially looking at design standard changes.
As separate instruments?
Right.
There is another piece to that. But at this time, the design standards seem to fit and work without adding a different guidebook. That's probably a different topic we can bring up a little bit, a little bit later. It's important, but we want to, I'll put a pin in that one and understand that we might want to return or augment that a little bit, which is perfect because that's, council will give us the direction, we'll move forward. Fencing, clear view triangles. Apparently, that wasn't, that's very confusing for folks. We want to make sure that it's very clear. Clear view triangles are at where intersections come together and want to make sure that there's no bushes or fences that would block someone from seeing a car coming at you from another direction. We want to make sure that's very clear and applicable in almost every section that stand up. Industrial districts. Industrial districts have some landscaping components. We want to provide some flexibility in what that looks like. Maybe an entrance component for the long stretch of industrial rather than putting tree, tree, tree. Maybe there's an opportunity for a park-like entrance rather than a long line of thousands of feet. Just some flexibility, opportunity to provide some, a little bit different in industrial district. One component was maybe putting in art rather than landscaping.
We have a question real quickly.
Certainly.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yeah. Nate, within this industrial district, have you spoken with the port, considering that we're actually part of their industrial district now?
We would invite them. We have already invited them to a specific section, and we definitely want to get input from anyone and everyone. I haven't seen anything from them, but we are, we haven't developed the regulations. This is just developing the list to put the regulations out there. So once we get the regulations in place that the people can see and understand what that looks like, we, yes, absolutely, they'll be part of the program. Okay. Twenty-nine, real quick. We had had in the old regulations, when I say old regulations, prior to adoption of, in October, September, October, for the Unified Development Code, there was a lot of coverage standards. Considering putting them back in, maybe for just R1 and R2, those are residential low-density zoning districts, low and medium. We do have an amendment for doing changes for flight zones. This is part of the airport overlay district. We've got some advanced work that we were trying to get ahead of because it's a little more complicated than the previous items listed. So we've already reached out a little bit to get some help as requested. So we're working on some, a little bit deeper language on that one. If council chooses to remove it, we'll stop that particular action, but we definitely want to get that in there. And what it will do is allow some flexibility to protect the landing areas for the airport and give some bonus densities for folks that are in those protection areas. It's a cluster, form of cluster with a bonus. So in the landing areas, come in the approach and takeoff, there's areas that the state, as well as the airport, want to protect from collision. Either the vehicle itself dropping out of the sky, the frequency of those landing areas, or even parts, something off of a plane. Those we don't want to see happen, but they can. And those areas need to be reduced in either density for occupancy. So example, a theater. You don't necessarily want a full theater being, having a collision with an aircraft. A school, a church. So we talked about separating those, moving those out. Although there's a component for the guidebook on mixed-use development, what we're doing in the new regulations is if you're doing, for example, residential, you get to push that area out, protect it, and get more density on the edges. So there's a bonus attached to it. So you're not penalized for necessarily having a property that's living under an airport. Also be aware that there's notification requirements that folks that are living there or working there will have on the, either the subdivision or a building permit, notice that there's noise, there's odors associated with an airport that it's fair warning. You live closer to an airport, it's quite amazing how people have complaints about an airport coming over and you're on what, you're right under the approach. It's going to happen quite a bit. So those regulations are going to be in place, hopefully with council approval. We want to actually add some opportunities for administrative variances. The administrative variances are very limited in scope, 10%, and very limited on what the administrator, being the director, can approve. We'd like to expand that, give an opportunity for some decision-making ability to say, yeah. And it's very small. And so if 10% on a, like a 15-foot setback is one and a half foot, it's small. It's small, but it does give flexibility. We've used it, and it's basically allowed development to move forward a little bit easier and better with opportunities for administrative variances. There's a little bit of process, but I want to make sure that it's not too horrible. Cul-de-sacs. We want to, actually, our current code prohibits cul-de-sacs except for when it's necessary. Want to expand that or change that so we understand what cul-de-sacs do. And to clarify, if, in fact, we have courts. Courts a little bit smaller. A cul-de-sac might run across and basically butt up to each other. We've seen that. We're trying to remove that, allow connectivity for emergency services. But a court is a common called, it's called mousier. It's still considered a cul-de-sac, but we want to say those are okay. Those aren't, the long roads at the end of the cul-de-sacs are the ones that we want to make sure they have appropriate circulation. There's RV regulations. We want to go through and make sure we understand what RV is for camping and what they do. I want to get those in. Casinos. Our code doesn't even tolerate them right now. But we do want to make sure that if, in fact, we have casinos in our community, being small gambling, that those are identified, allowed where they're allowed. Typically, there, there's a separation between them and schools and churches and other forms of places. But want to get back them back into code. We want to add environmental and industrial cleanup for a light industrial definition. We have current application. We do have a project that's moving in forward that needs this help in making sure that it's allowed in that industrial district. Right now, it's listed. We do have an interpretation that's pending or processed, but we don't want to make sure that we But uh, we don't want to make sure that we don't have in code, so those policies are effective. We want to make sure that our preliminary uh, subdivision process for approval and our final are consistent. They have little glitches, we're beginning to change that if allowed. Um. We want to actually have standard specification, specifications for fourplexes on corner lots. Fourplexes are allowed and right now we've seen driveway, driveway, driveway on one side on a, on a corner light. So that again comes back with our. Do, we like to split them and do that rather than this. Yep. So that's what that does. Uh, very, very straightforward and simple, but want to make sure it's in code so there's a clear expectation for the developer or property owner to understand what that means. Um. It's here. Oh, um, we do have some. Additional uh, thoughts on subdivisions for site plans. Want to make sure that's clear and understand what a site plan is. Um, that's basically preliminary engineering for infrastructure. Right now we have code sections that stipulate, but want to have clear criteria on what that is, what materials are submitted. And those are really important for us to move forward on approvals at the preliminary stage to say, it doesn't have to be full design. It just has to say the infrastructure is available and where it's going to be located. So that's, that's kind of important for us to move forward. Um. Though there's another component for mixed use development, mixed use are allowing commercial and residential basically in the same structure. And in at least our downtown core, we want to have a component where says. At the first floor needs to be protected for commercial uses. It shouldn't necessarily be for residential in its entirety. But for accessories, uh, for spaces that have um. A barrier free components for ADA, for Americans with disabilities acts, want the first floor. Uh, opportunity for folks that have disabilities needs getting that first floor. Um, so that component is a part of the amendment cycle. Uh, we want to add specific specifications for light. And heavy vehicles, retail, sales and rentals. Right now it's, our code is lacking in those particular standard specifications. And we have a need where they're located, how much? So. If we have uh, like say downtown, we can probably have some small. Vehicles, but we don't have the large lot developments. We'll push those out into larger commercial areas, maybe even industrial. So I'll make sure that's very clear for those to be in. Um, we want to add a use morgue. Don't have it. That's pretty straightforward. Uh, we want to do a change for lot consolidation and boundary line adjustments for plat certifications. Plat certifications are basically uh, confirmation of ownership. Want to make sure you own the land to be able to process the permit. I know that sounds, but it's not in the code and so this is a component. Um, for bounds, lines adjustments, also there's an expiration time period. It's really short. We want to expand that time period to ninety days and allowing another, another ninety days for people to be able to record their, their boundary line adjustment. Um, they're uh, important to get done, they can be relatively expensive on occasion. Um, and right now our code is a really short time period, want to expand that. In the R three district, we don't necessarily have lot dimensional requirements, but we allow single family development. So in the single family development, unlike the uh, medium and low density. You can have any lot as long as it meets the density requirement and specific fronting. That doesn't really make much sense. So we're trying to make it consistent with the medium density and low. So that there are specific dimensional standards for uh, single family development in the multifamily zoning district. So that's uh, pretty straightforward, makes sense. We do have a standard specification for zero setbacks. It's not specifically defined or outlined and also we have some state statutes coming through for zero development, two separate issues. Um, so we do want to have an opportunity for interior lot zero setback, but maybe a leapfrog. So we'd have building to building zero, which is great, popping line between them, but give a gap on this side. To allow people to run their mowing, the, the mower from the backyard to the front yard rather than going through the kitchen and the living room. Um, so instead of having building, 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 building with zero setbacks, we want to have gaps, leapfrog component or separations. So once I only, um, that's not very clear in our code and we. Do kind of allow it, but it isn't really in the code the way it's supposed to be written, so it's kind of a mess. Um, we have recently adopted specific guidelines for subdivisions for plating and mapping standards. Want to make sure those are referenced in code, including our community development manual. Um, I know that it's being updated at this time and want to make sure those guidelines are adopted by reference. We're on the last stretch. Thank you for bearing with me. Um, we want to have requirements for street naming and addressing in the subdivision process that's very clear. Right now the uh, street naming and addressing is a internal policy, want to encode, make sure it's uh, not changed. Want to have a specific language for appeal abilities. Um. If a use is allowed and then there's no appeal opportunity for a permit, we should state it. And put it in code because there's some uh, feeling that we should have appeal uh, for basically everything and some things don't. So we should clarify that, put it in code. And the last item that was added, uh, a, a change, we want to be able to shrink this process. This process has multiple stages from preliminary to final. And quite honestly, the end goal is to get the council to give direction to planning commission to move forward with the docket. The amendment would basically change that and eradicate the preliminary docket cycle and put it right in front of council as early as possible. So we can get the direction to move forward with whatever amendments are necessary. And uh, that's the last one on the item and uh. I do know that there was a comment on putting small scale neighborhood commercial uses. Um, if that's acceptable to council, then we can add or subtract any component the use desire. Planning commission, is there, did I miss anything or?
No.
On a, thank you for bearing with me. I do appreciate, that was about as fast as I could go.
Well, I was going to say we've had two study sessions, so that's quite a number of hours.
Yep.
Just to get the list put together to ask for permission to use staff time to continue to get this back to you. Cause there's a lot of things I don't agree with that we've gone through on this, but we have to put some time into it. We want to clarify stuff, we want to make it so it's uh, clear. I guess that's clarifying it. And so everybody interprets the stuff the same way.
Correct.
It's going to take time and has a lot to do with what we've already worked on, just things that Nate's been finding out. And as we quickly ran through those fifty. It uh, it's going to take us a lot of time.
Council member Lombardi?
So I just want to clarify, so uh, with the motion tonight uh, to approve or not approve, that is not. Formalizing these items exactly as they're written, that's just to continue the discussion of them, right?
Correct.
Um, because I certainly had some questions on the ADUs as far as rentals and how many, you know, do you have? And how does it affect the neighborhood? Uh, you know, it could change if you have a, a certain amount. Just like a condo that's concerned about its owner occupancy and so forth. Um, I also had questions on the connection exemption with five acres. Uh, if something is landlocked, somebody in front of them's got to give an easement then, is that right? Yeah, yeah. So just wanted to make sure I was. We're on the same page. Okay, very good. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Any other questions? Mr. Fancher?
Well, I guess Nate asked a question and Dan brought one up. Um. And, and we do have cases of neighborhood commercial today. Uh, Franks was a great example of it and it has served a need for. Before my time here and I've been here a long time. So, um, I'd sure like. I'd sure like that looked at because as we grow, as we continue to move out into other areas, it is a kind of a critical component to think about. So for sure.
Fifty one.
Yep.
I understand. All right.
Yeah, I think we have consensus on that, so.
All right. Wh- when you motion, please add that to the.
Okay.
Component.
All right.
Thank you.
Planning commissioners, do you have any other comments?
Just going to be a lot of work.
Yeah, I agree.
I think some of it's needed. Uh. We all knew this was coming.
Yep. I believe we'll be available for input or council or whatever throughout the process, so. We're always a phone call away, I think. Um, okay. I would accept a motion.
I would make a motion um, to approve uh, the planning commission docket as presented with one addition. For item fifty one to consider um, what neighborhood commercial or, I don't know what else we call it. Um, some sort of service or commercial component um, in non-commercial traditional uses.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Council member Fancher?
I'm going to have a comment. Um, this, I agree guys, this is a heavy lift. We've been through a lot of them lately, but I think when we went through the, the code rewrite. We knew the lift was coming. Uh, so like I say, uh, keep us informed of, of needs and wants and staff will too. Um, but, but this is, this is the next critical component.
Okay, uh, again, we have a motion in a second to approve the planning commission. Docket for the development code updates and amendments. Uh, with the addition of an item fifty one, as council member Fancher stated, for uh, the addition of. How do you want to phrase this, Mark? Small scale.
Small scale or, or neighborhood commercial.
Or neighborhood commercial development in residential zones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Unanimously. Again, thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, and we do have a, a request here. I just want to get a show of hands or however you want to acknowledge this question. Which council members are going to attend the planning commission twenty seven, twenty twenty seven comp plan update kickoff open house on the eleventh at six PM? Okay, what's today? That's Thursday. At what time? Anybody? Okay, we have. Perfect. Dawn, Judy? Okay, so we have so far uh, council members Lombardi and Fancher and potentially council member Madwell for sure. I can't say that I'll be there, I have a fairly hectic week. No, we do not. So with, with that being said, please, if you did say that you're not attending, do not attend. Or let Debbie know and we'll post it, but that is coming up on Thursday, so speak now pretty much. Um. All right, item number two is the consent agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, which I would accept now.
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from council member Myers in a second from council member Lombardi to move to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There's no old business this me, uh, this evening, so we'll move on to new business. Uh, which the first item is the Holmesley site specific rezone change ordinance thirty seventy seven. Um, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Vivian Ramsey for the presentation and then we, Mr. Levitt has some comments on this. Vivian?
Oh, thank you. Uh, we have a request from Mr. Holmesley to change his uh, the zoning on his property from. One portion to, from commercial, general commercial to R three multifamily. And another portion from light industrial to general commercial C two. Well. The drawings were in your packet, all right, I put them in front of you, yeah. So, um, the. At first he had uh, put it forward as a comp plan amendment, but the comp plan uh, land use designation for these properties. Is gateway commercial, which supports both the commercial and the, the R three residential as mixed uses.
Yeah, sorry, I was going to say something, Vivian. I know these are new microphones tonight, but if you could move a, a little bit more closely to the microphone. Uh, I, I could hear you, but.
Okay, um, well, that's it. No. Anyway, the planning, so because it was consistent with the land use designations in the comp plan, the. Hearing examiner did hold a public hearing on this and he has uh, provided a recommendation to you. Um, that was in your packets also to approve the, the zone change.
Thank you, Vivian. All right, Mr. Levitt, did you have some comments on this? We could get the clock up for five minutes real quick.
I'm, I'm Dan Levitt, uh, Paul twenty four, South Pioneer Way, Moses Lake. Just a couple of things to, to clarify on the exhibit that you have, um, it's showing. Twelve parcel lines that, but then only six parcel numbers, but according to the Grant County assessor, it is six parcels being. Changed from light industrial to um. To commercial and then one parcel from commercial to R three. Um, and as Mr. Ramsey said, there, there was a public hearing before the, the hearing examiner. He reviewed all the staff materials, staff report. Uh, there was no, no public comment, public hearing. Um, so I would just encourage the council to follow the recommendation of the hearing examiner and to. Approve this rezone. I'll answer any questions if you have any. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Levitt, real quickly, the property there that's where the school district has property, what is that considered?
The blue is, is public.
Public, okay, and then the orange?
The orange is R three and the red is C two, yeah, and then the, the striped is the light industrial.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to adopt ordinance three zero seven seven, the Holmesley site specific rezone change ordinance as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance three zero seven seven, Holmesley site specific rezone change. Ordinance thirty seventy seven is presented. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Vivian. All right, next up we have item number four. Which is the late comer contracts for Lakemont major plat resolutions four zero two two and four zero two three. Presented this evening by capital improvement plan project manager, Lee Ramsey. That's a mouthful.
Yes, it is. Hello, good evening, council and mayor. I am here to present to you a couple of resolutions for us to adopt late comer contracts for the. It's two locations, but it's technically Lakemont. Um, we have Southeast Lake Drive and Burke Drive. There are parcels that are benefiting from the developer installing street improvements and utilities. And so developers requesting that we enter into a contract that is future development occurs on those parcels, they will be reimbursed for their installations.
Council member Fancher?
What? Were the reimbursements fifteen years?
So it's fifteen years for streets and twenty years for the utilities.
Utilities.
Correct.
Any questions? Other questions, sorry?
I would make a motion to adopt resolution four zero two two, lake comer water and sewer is presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move to adopt the resolution forty twenty two, lake comer water and sewer as presented. Any discussion or questions? I I do have a question. We had mentioned streets, so is that also part of this?
It's the second resolution.
Oh, sorry. Hey, glad I asked. All right. Um, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And I'll move to adopt resolution four zero two-three lake comer streets as presented.
I'll second again.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution forty twenty-three lake comer streets as presented. Any discussion or questions? And I will not ask if that includes water and sewer. I know, I know that now, so. Any questions? Discussion? Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes unanimously. All right, this time we will have staff reports. Mr. Carlinsey.
Thank you, Your Honor and City Council. Um, so there's a couple of items you see under staff reports. There's a couple of other items I'd like to to discuss as well. One uh just came up yesterday. Uh, Mayor Peter Sharp, who is here in the room, uh contacted me yesterday. Uh, they have, they're in a little bit of a bind because, you know, they have a very small staff and they just had a vacancy in their planning and building department and they need a little assistance until they can replace that position. Um, so I suggested to the to the mayor uh that that Moses Lake offer that service through our staff at cost. Um, and the mayor was amenable to that idea. Uh, Mayor, do you want to comment at all or say anything?
Our city currently uh has everything on paper and before that some no paper. So we want to move it obviously into our direction to where it should be handled. And we know that you guys are on the right step and right track. We want to follow, you know, your footprint. Um, and even if it's by shadow alone, um, I know you guys have the resources and assets to do so for us and help push our little city forward where we need to be legally liable, liable, libally and, you know, physically for our city. Uh, but anything you can do to help assist us to move us in the right direction is much appreciated. Uh, we want to try to get away from paper. We want to try to get online and have everything done, you know, in in a strict faction. You guys billing codes might be a little bit different than ours, but for structurally, they're about the same. Um, so I don't think it'll be a seamless transition. It'll be pretty quick. Um, and moving forward for our city, it would help us out tremendously. So anything that you need from us, please let us know.
Councilmember Lombardi? Mr. Sharp, if you wouldn't mind hanging out up there for a minute?
I was uh planning to make a motion on it, but I'll leave it open for discussion first.
Okay, thank you, Victor. I did have a question on that. I mean, this may not be fair to ask, but do you have any idea of how maybe how long you might need these services?
Um, I was talking with the your city manager and I know it'd be nice to have a cushion of six months. Um, obviously, you know, if we can get the transition, we don't have a platform, so we have no ground to stand on. We need to build a ground first and then put someone in that position and say, hey, this is how our city standards are going to be. Um, and if we align them with yours, then when you guys grow, obviously, we'll see that growth like, okay, they moved on to the next thing. We need to follow suit, so we're all close sixteen.
Sure, I like that. Okay, any other questions, comments? Now, I think Mr. Lombardi has a motion for us.
Well, Mayor, since um Soap Lake is a wonderful partner for the city of Moses Lake and also the fact that our our planning and building department now is so improved, um, they're looking for extra work. I'd like to make the motion that we authorize the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Soap Lake to provide both planning and building permit and inspection services at cost and not to exceed a period of six months. Keep in mind, this interlocal agreement shall be subject to the approval of the Moses Lake City Attorney.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second, I think I have a question.
Oh, that's okay. We can, we can do that right now. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Martinez?
Councilmember Lombardi mentioned at cost, but there, it's more than just cost, right? Do we need to state that in the motion?
Well, we can just say for the record that at cost is the hourly rate of the employee, depending on if they're, if it's overtime or straight time, uh, plus an overhead charge of about fifteen percent. And then any other miscellaneous costs like travel costs, things like that.
Would you like to amend that? If there, yeah, if there are no objections, we'll just make that amendment to include overhead costs in the the cost. Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council, and thank you, Z. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Sharp.
Your Honor, I have um just uh three more things. It looks like two more things, but actually have three more things. Um, at your city council retreat last June, you came out of that retreat not only with your council priorities, but also twenty-one agreements that came out of that. And I just want you to know that we are tracking those. We have leads assigned to each one of those items uh plus due dates and our city clerk is can he give you a peek at what what those look like? We're tracking them on Microsoft Planner. Um, and I tried to send you guys a link to it and you, I don't think anybody, any one of you could open it because I wanted you to open it up in Microsoft Planner so you could fully appreciate how we're tracking it. So I'm working with I T to figure out how you can actually go in there and peruse them yourselves. But um Debbie, can you click on just one of the items and show, just pick any random one and click on show details? It should be like if you, if you hover over one and then you'll see the three little dots. We did not rehearse this beforehand, so I apologize. Yeah, so there's, there's an example of details where it shows who's assigned, what the due date is. So I just wanted you to know that we are tracking these and not losing track of them.
Uh, Debbie, would you please pull up specifically item number fifteen?
And I can't see that from here. Which is that?
Yeah, for the people in the audience. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read this real quickly. Uh, fifteen is a library building cost assessment and the notes here to conduct, conduct an assessment of all the city's costs to maintain, operate and preserve the library building. Determine whether the city is recovering its costs from the library district. Also compare, compare what Moses Lake taxpayers contribute to the library district to what the district spends on library services in Moses Lake. Extend and amend the library use agreement for one year to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six in order to have time to conduct the building cost assessment. So hopefully that provides a little bit of clarity. Thank you.
So I just, I I do plan on getting you this link so that you can open it and look at it yourself, but I just want you to know that it exists and we're tracking it, so. Um, you know, I think we'll save the fun thing for last. Is that okay, Doug? Um, not that, not that Madeline's isn't fun, but Madeline, can you go next?
Mine's just numbers and that's kind of boring to most people, so.
There is interest to us. Yes.
At the last council meeting, uh, the council members had requested some examples of the wastewater rate increases that would potentially be seen uh with the option for that council authorized us to move forward with or to proceed with. And so what we've done is we've gone through and given you, based on the different user classes, some examples of the rate increases that we could expect to see from twenty-six through twenty thirty. Um, and so uh on the screen and in front of you, and I believe in the packet as well, um, you can see that we have multifamily and Jessica put a lot of work into this where she went through all of our customer customer accounts and she identified exactly how many customers we have that are a low user, an average user, a high user, and she put the numbers together for us to see that, for example, multifamily currently, if they're, they have two hundred and twenty-nine units, which we have nine accounts with up to two hundred and twenty-nine units. Currently today, they're paying two thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents um a month for those units for for wastewater. Um, you can see going across twenty twenty-six, that would increase to thirty-five eighty-one. Um, and all the way up to twenty thirty, it would increase to sixty-two forty-seven per month for a customer that has as up to two hundred and twenty-nine units. Um, the low units, um, or a low user that has three to twenty units, it would go from thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents up to a high of eighty-one eighty-four per month for that user in that class. Um, industrial, the same kind of thing. Again, we've got, you know, uh fifteen users that um customers that have zero to fourteen thousand four hundred cubic feet per month and their bills would go from a hundred and twenty-seven sixty-four today to three hundred and forty-nine eighty-three by twenty thirty. Um, and then in our our highest usage for industrial users, we have five accounts that use uh and anywhere between forty-three thousand one hundred and two hundred and one thousand six hundred cubic feet per month. Their bills would go from forty-seven fifty thirty-six up to thirteen thousand twenty-seven fifty-nine by twenty thirty. Um, commercial, um, that one is a, you know, obviously our biggest customer usage is the small, the the smaller or the low usage, five hundred and seventy-six accounts in the zero to four thousand cubic feet usage per month. So those bills will go from forty-seven eighteen up to seventy-nine oh five by twenty thirty. Um, and obviously we have twenty-eight accounts, commercial accounts that use thirty thousand.
Quick question. I noticed that the the lows figure on this is zero. So does that imply that even if you 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 don't flush the toilet at all, you still pay forty-seven?
There's a fixed fee component to this, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And as you can see also on the commercial, you know, we have twenty-eight count accounts that are those high users, um, thirty thousand one hundred cubic feet to a hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred cubic feet per month. And their bills would go from two thousand eight thirty-four, forty-nine to forty-seven forty-two eighteen by twenty thirty. On the the good side, on the flip side, is the single family and the duplex, uh, they all are going to decrease um slightly. So for uh the single family will go from forty-three ninety-eight down to thirty-nine twenty-four by twenty thirty. So those accounts will be seeing a decrease in their sewer rates and the same thing with the duplex customers. They go from eighty-seven ninety-seven today down to seventy-four fifty-seven by twenty thirty. And as you can see by the number of accounts, those are our largest number of customers in those two classes right there. So. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you or try.
Questions or comments? Thank you. Yeah, I think um, you know, based on the discussions we've had and our intent here, this this very well illustrates what it is we're trying to do, right? Just to level the playing field, so. Um, you know, and it's always a a balancing act, of course. I I for one recognize the relationship between our employers here in town and their employees and the quality of life for everybody involved in those entities. And so it's always um, you know, making sure that the people are paying for what they use, number one, but again, just to make it it fair for every, everybody in the community. So I'm really glad that we're moving in this direction. Mr. Carlinsey?
Also, we are conducting the water rate study as well. We plan on having the results of that to you at the first meeting in October. And then we're recommending that the rate adjustments for both water and sewer be brought forward to you at the meeting in December, uh, which would be the second Tuesday in December for the, for you to actually vote on the rate adjustments and rate increases for water and sewer. And then they would go into effect on uh January first.
Correct. So this will be, and normally we do the rate increases in the, as part of the fee schedule. This will kind of be a little different than what we normally do because we do want to highlight for you this five-year increase for water and sewer that we're proposing. So it will be a separate uh, a separate a resolution for the rate adjustments for the utilities.
And I will remind you, you have some decreases in here as well, which is rare.
That is true.
You should be celebrating, right?
And also with with water, you you'll have a similar policy discussion about how to phase in and make it all balanced, so similar conversation. In addition, we'll be um talking about the tiered rates, um, also the excess usage charge, whether to continue that or not. So there'll be a few other things to consider with water as well. Um, speaking of water, um, if I could just say, um, we have an all-day city council meeting a week from today. Now, I've been telling you nine to five, but I think it needs to be eight to five. We, we just went over all the things we're going to talk about and it's a lot. So any objections? Having from eight to five, I promise we'll take breaks, we'll have lunch, we'll have coffee and pastries in the morning. Any objections?
Yep.
Sure, sure.
Six to three thirty is good for me.
Yeah. It's your meeting. You tell me when.
Can we have some protein?
I'd be fired.
Not just pastries?
Sure.
And can we, can we uh have a goal to not go all the way to five? Like, you know, we're, we're gonna allow those hours, but the goal is to finish before then.
I can, I can try for closing, be done by five. Um, if you, if you want to get done early, you can talk less.
Before we make that, before.
That is not pointed to me in particular.
No, 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 no.
Just pointing that out.
Councilmember Lombardi did have a question or comment. Sorry, let's not forget that.
Um, it wasn't about the overtime rate we're going to get, right? Okay. Uh, no, I just wanted to compliment staff. This is, this um breakdown is about as good as it gets and uh probably the best breakdown I've seen since I've been with the city. So just wanted to say great. They gave us more information than I expected and it's broken out in an extremely professional manner, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to staff.
Thank you, Victor. Okay, so there's a question on the table. Is it uh eight to five with the goal of being done prior to five?
I can get you out of there by four fifty-nine.
Okay. We'll see about that. Uh, all right, what's up next?
Doug, take it away. Oh.
So one of your agreements was uh continuing to have the the dump events, the giving people the ability to to have the free dump days and our code enforcement officer, Speedy, was already on it and that's his nickname, Speedy. Uh, they're having one this weekend, uh, Saturday at Blue Heron Park and also at the Larson Rec Center. And it's going from ten to two P M. And if you look, well, we can get you the information on the items that are uh proved to be dumped. And it's open to all of the people that live in the city of Moses Lake.
So then we have this on social media, I'm assuming?
Yeah. Yes.
You're so online, Deanna. All right. I love it. All right, thank you, Vivian. And I think last but not least, Mr. Coote has something for us.
Uh, if you ask Chief Sands, I am the least. That's, that's fine. I'll take that. Um, I have two items for you this evening. Just a couple of reminders. I I I got rid of, I mean, my little sheet there that had the dump days on it, so I didn't have to announce those. That means it's only two. Um, you may have noticed on walking in, there's a uh scarecrow decoupage out there. Um, that is the example. Uh, the haunt the civic center scarecrow contest begins in October, October first. So entries are due September thirtieth, oddly enough. Um, there is information out uh outside, just outside the museum uh for anyone who wants to enter. There are multiple categories. There are categories for groups or businesses, adults eighteen plus, youth for eleven to seventeen, and then children uh ten years and under. So uh construction is all identified, what you have to be able to do. It's all out there. It's really kind of fun. And every year I come in in October and see the scarecrows in there, I find it, I find it quite uh amusing and funny to see the different ways people have taken the the direction and gone with it. So uh, pass that on to your constituents, pass that on to your friends, your neighbors, and let's see if we can really haunt the civic center this uh October. Uh, that was number one. Number two, uh, council members and Mr. Mayor, you have this in front of you. Uh, our next gallery. Uh, our next gallery opening uh is this Friday uh from four to seven P M. out here in the Civic uh um breezeway. Uh, the artist is Dawn Nutt, and the exhibit is A Tortured Land. Uh, it is a uh a painting study of the Cooley's Creeks and uh lakes of the Columbia Basin, the Waterville Plateau, and the mighty Columbia. Uh, the art is incredible. I've I've walked through and taken a look at it. I mean, I'm a musician, so I don't know art, but I know what I like, and it looked pretty good to me. Um, there will be some light refreshments at the grand opening, but the exhibit runs from September twelfth through October thirty-first. And on Friday from four to seven, they will be doing a um free craft activity for uh ages eighteen and older. You know, we always have to do, you know, the free craft activity for the kids. This one's for the adults. Uh, it is a watercolor, uh and they are going to walk you through how to do stacked stones as a watercolor. So um, come on out to the museum on Friday, four to seven P M. That's what I've got for you.
Thank you, Doug. All right, now we have city council member reports, starting with I'm gonna start tonight with Councilmember Lombardi.
Going to take a sip first, but.
Sorry, sir.
It's not that long. Uh Municipal Airport, uh they're doing their last minute uh preparation for their crack seal work. Uh, the Port of Moses Lake is getting closer and closer to bidding out for their um rail system. I wanted to give a special thanks to both our lobbyists, the federal and state. Uh, they were really helpful in answering some questions for me regarding um the well, twenty-nine grants that were given and then ones that would be available that we can tap into, both on the federal side and on the state side. So thank you to both of them. Um, I'll be going to an en- energy conference uh in Manoa this week with the port and also, and I'll give an update uh at the next meeting. And October first is when the new retail taxes kick in. Just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. Councilmember Francher? Heck, yeah.
Nothing for me. Next, next time.
Thanks, Mark. Councilmember Martinez?
Uh, we're still working out the kinks on the N C W opioid um council. Um, the budget was June to June. And uh those cities and uh governments that are involved in this particular council have requested that it go to January because that's how we all work. So um, there might be, you know, there's obviously some work to to get that fixed um since that's a six-month gap.
Thank you, Deanna. Councilmember Myers?
I just have a request for an update on the traffic control art program that uh we've discussed previously.
We're, we're in process. Um, we've reached out to S T C U and uh I believe Brad um Brad Mitchell has reached out to them. There he's their contact point, but we have not heard back from them as yet. Uh, once we get a little more information and some movement on that, we will be back to you with more information.
Okay, did uh the contact information get passed along? Because I did speak with them. Um, we do need to design the art and select somebody to install it. Then we apply for the money.
We've, we've selected the firm to do the installation. We are working on the creative district end to get the art selected. Um, but we need specifications on the boxes from, there's a lot of little moving pieces that we're working on the details on, like the, did the the sides of the boxes have vents on them? We need to know how the design has to be placed. Uh, it's not a flat basic canvas. It is a wraparound, so we need to understand how it wraps and where the folds are and where it has to go inside. Um, we're trying to get all that information organized. Um, Brad has been the contact for S T C U, so we've been following up with him, and he said he has not heard back from them yet. So until we get that resolved, we're working on our end on the art process, getting we're going to be reaching out to schools and finding artists to bid on this, but we need the specs for the boxes before we can do that.
Okay. I'll see if I can stir up something.
Absolutely. And if if they can't get a hold of Brad, they can certainly get a hold of me, and I can put them in the right contact.
Thank you, Dawn. Deanna, did you have something on that?
The um public and maybe council, I don't know, may not know what we're talking about. So back when S T C U had its open house or business after hours, um, I asked what S T C U might be able to help with. Uh, I was looking for um uh some sort of water structure for kids in low economic area. Anyway, um, they said they didn't do that, but they do um uh do the traffic control um boxes. And they beautify them. So um that's what we're talking about. S T C U has agreed to potentially help us uh with some funding so that we're not all staring at these um plain traffic box, uh control boxes. So.
Thank you, Deanna. Deputy Mayor Madewell?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, and I did, I did uh read the proclamation earlier in the evening for Dawn and Mary Cunningham Day. I did want to share that we also dedicated a park bench, which is in front of the Aquatic Center appropriately for the Cunningtons. So there's a new place to sit in front of the the Aquatic Center. Um, also, I wanted to report that we did uh have a joint meeting with the Port of Moses Lake. I think that occurred since our last meeting, right? Um, the port shared with us a fairly robust uh plan for the next few years, including the plans for their rail and where they are with that project and the associated uh tax increment area. Um, we were able to share our council priorities that we developed at our retreat. Um, so we are looking to develop an even stronger relationship with the port going forward and make sure that as our plans develop, we keep them in mind and vice versa. We've got a few different initiatives we would probably be working on together, including transportation, water, and importantly, also economic development. So um, more to come from that. We do have the Grant County Lead Summit coming up, I think. Is that in November? Um, and so there will be a lot more discussions about that, but on the county level. So not only will the port be there, but the county, beauty, health district and other entities. Uh, so keep that on your calendar. Uh, with all that being said, I will announce the future council meetings. We have a special meeting on the eleventh at six P M. Is that right? Uh, September sixteenth, eight A M. to five P M. We're going to come here and discuss water, correct?
So we will talk about um all of the capital improvement plans from streets to storm to water to sewer to facilities to parks. So uh we'll be covering that in the morning, and then it'll be mostly water, if not all water, in the afternoon.
Excellent. Thank you. And then our next regular meeting, just like this one tonight, is at September, on September twenty-third at six thirty P M. So at this time, we're going to go into an executive session for ten minutes. The time is now eight twenty-six. So we will return here at eight thirty-six uh with potential, or excuse me, the executive session is pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one ten uh potential litigation, and we will have action to follow. Meeting is adjourned. No, excuse me. Meeting is not adjourned.
But we did last week.
Subject covers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the two separation agreements in regards to our reduction in force.
We have a motion by Councilmember Myers and a second by Deputy Mayor Madewell uh to, I'm sorry, authorize the city manager to execute the separation agreements for the two reductions in force. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That is the conclusion of business for this evening. Meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-six.